Indivisible.
Okay, we're down to item B on the agenda, which is roll call. Reminder to all council members and student representatives to please where you are virtually watching from or participating from and and simple city and county or city and state is sufficient.
Or township.
Or or you could you could provide as much detail as you want to, but that's sufficient.
It's all it's going to print as city and state or township and state or something like that, yes.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Bell.
Present in Dexter, Michigan.
Councilmember Cousins.
Councilmember Cousins.
And I have not seen him.
Forest Street on.
Oh, there you are. Okay. Councilmember Fisher.
She's on the list there, but she's no sound.
No sound? I don't know if she can hear. Hear and wave at us. I don't know. Okay, I'm not I'm not seeing. Right, okay. Well, I see it trying to connect, so we'll do that. And I assume she's in her home in Dexter, so. Councilmember Knight.
Here from Dexter, Michigan.
Councilmember Michelle.
Present from America's high five state Dexter.
Councilmember Smith.
Here in Dexter, Michigan.
Student rep Alex Gilbert.
Here from Dexter, Michigan.
And Alex, are you in the city?
Uh, no, I'm outside the city.
Okay, okay. What township are you in, do you know?
Webster Township.
Webster, okay, that's good. That's what I need. Student rep Isabella Malik.
Um, here, okay, I'm on the road coming home from soccer practice, so technically I'm in Brighton, Michigan, but I will be in Dexter, Michigan, so. In like 10 minutes.
Okay, well, okay, will you will you be in the city?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, okay. We can put you on the road to there. And Mayor Keo.
Uh, participating virtually from my home in Dexter, Michigan. Okay, thank you, everyone, for joining us. And item C is approval of meeting minutes, and we don't have any to approve this evening since we just had a meeting a week ago. So we're down to item D, which is prearranged participation. And we have two entities to hear from and talk to today. Our first is from Norfolk Development, Mr. Sean Lefair. So, Justin, if you could unmute Sean for me, please.
Hi, guys. How is everybody doing?
Good. But thank you for joining us today.
Thank you. Just wanted to kind of circle back around with the city, kind of after, you know, this this past summer and this year with everything going on and what our plans are moving forward. We believe that, again, that, you know, the building three that we've always referred to out of the three different buildings, building three being the office building has a lot going for it from a performance standpoint, that building seems to work in today's current conditions. So we've started working on drawings and the performa and the budget on that building and working with Quinn Evans, the architect and MCI, the engineer. We'll be starting to finalize our plans and be submitting for site plan approval. Hopefully, as early spring, maybe a little right after the first of the year, February, February or so is what we're shooting for to take the this project to the next step, which will be the building three phase of the project. Currently working with the adjacent homeowners right now. I'm trying to finalize a deal with them. And the the project again that we're we're talking about is office space retail in a residential section to it. We are still. We know the first floor will be office and some sort of retail. The second floor was always office and we're looking at possibly doing the second floor, a residential section and office. Hopefully, and by the time we get through the approval process through the site plan, we'll have a little bit better picture of you know, what the economics look like from a or I should say a market looks like for the residential component versus a office components. We're kind of, if you if you look at it, is we're gonna design a little vanilla box that we can make that adjustment further on down the road. But, you know, we do want to move forward with the project. The due project, if we do get the the adjacent parcels, we'll have a parking in the rear of the buildings and a second level parking deck on it. So we're you know, we've heard a lot from through, you know, our time working with the city and the the surrounding businesses that, you know, although you know, parking is available in the city and in that area, it is still a very prominent part of somebody wanting office space and retail. So you know, we are adding that parking component to the project. So I wanted to just get in front of you guys tonight, a little bit, A, to bring you up to speed on where we're at. And then the second part is, is, you know, we've started this whole project being in kind of partnership with the city throughout it, and we've had talks about the city, you know, the possibility of the city looking to move their offices to this. And I've always said from day one is, you know, the projects can move forward with or without the city, but you have been a partner, you know, I kind of look at it as if, you know, it's kind of almost first rate of refusal. So, you know, we want to kind of put it out there to the city to start those discussions if they have interest moving forward with the city to put start laying out a little bit of a timeline of where we're going. And the last thing we want to do is lease out the first floor, lease out the building and not have you guys have the opportunity to to move there. So again, you know, we're going to move forward with it, but, you know, we would love to have you guys join in the project as you've been a partner through the whole process and have been great to work with. So we're that is kind of our timeline, what our where we're going with things. So hopefully, in the next couple of months here, you know, by the spring and hopefully this COVID stuff all starts to get behind us moving into next year. So that's kind of a brief overview of where things are at right now. Yeah.
John, John, thank you for the update on things. So what what do you? What do you see then as a process when you get to the point where you want to ask the city if we're interested? What kind of process would you describe or could you describe that process? Do we what do what's what would be the first step in your mind? And then how would you see that proceeding? So the council has kind of an idea of what what to expect if that's the direction we should try to decide to go.
Sure. I think the first thing we'd probably put together would be, you know, some sort of letter of intent. They kind of A, you know, hey, you guys are interested in it. And then that would give a timeframe. It within that we lay out a timeframe for us to to work out kind of the outline of the whether it's a purchase agreement or a lease agreement, you know, that's up to the city as well, you know, they want we'll take the building and we'll kind of make it a condominium. You could purchase your section or, you know, if you wanted to do a long term lease with it, but those are things we can work through. So the first part would be again, kind of a letter of intent that, you know, hey, we're we're working towards this. That gives us some some comfort of, you know, let's continue to put the the architects, the Quinn Evans, start getting them working on the buildings. So during that timeframe, we can work out the kind of the the outline of the, again, whether it's purchase agreement or lease. So we'd be looking for some sort of commitment out of you guys within the next you know, month, two months, you know, 60 days from the the letter of intent standpoint of it. And then, you know, we can by spring, hopefully by the time we're submitting for site plan approval, we'll have had time to work out, you know, what the terms and what the details are of the, again, whether it's a lease agreement or a purchase agreement.
Gotcha. Okay, so that that helps. So if you if spring is is roughly mid to late March, something like that, you'd want to start those letter of intent discussions somewhere in mid-January then.
Yeah, so I let you know, obviously, the the sooner the better, you know, that just gives us more. But I understand, you know, working with the municipality, it's not one one individual here. So there's those discussions have to happen amongst yourselves. But the, you know, obviously, the sooner the better to get those deals worked worked out. You know, purchase agreements and deals like that, you know, it seems like, you know, they don't happen overnight, so the sooner we can start on it, the better. But I understand also that, you know, you're working with the council versus the individual landlord.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Michelle, I see you have your hand up. Did you have a question?
Yeah, just wondered, Sean, what about the brownfield plan? Where are you in that?
Yeah, so the brownfield plan is, you know, refer to buildings one and two. So building three is completely outside of the brownfield area. So this doesn't take into there. We are still trying to work on, you know, buildings two and three. Again, we want to see the entire project move forward. But our focus currently has been on building three.
So Sean, just for just for clarity, if you do the brownfield plan, even though the area for building three doesn't have any remediation that's necessary, if you do the brownfield plan for the entire what we call the 3045 Broad Street Development Project, you can build up value or build up funds from the revenue in that is generated in building three to help cover some of those costs that have become a hurdle in buildings one and two.
Yes, that's a great point. You're correct. That is a great point. And I will get with SME and we'll circle back. And I don't have the answer for you right now, but I.
That's fine. That's fine. Just want to make sure that we cover all bases. And I and I think when you if you talk with James, he can provide way more detail about it than I ever could for you, so.
I will give them a call tomorrow.
Thank you.
Do does anybody else on council or staff have a question? I I appreciate the update, Sean.
Absolutely.
I I have just one quick one. Sean, does the building three site necessitate a reworking of the road?
It does not. What will happen if we build building three with the road alignment as is right now? The Broad Street side will have a larger, call it front lawn. And then when we can reconfigure the road construction, we'll basically take the front lawn out. So we'll build the the structures as if the road was you know, realigned, but we won't realign the road until we do the other building. So we'll just kind of have a a bigger lawn area for the time.
Thank you. Thank you. And once again, described, you said it's it's a two story building with a parking in the the rear on the second level.
So it's looking at anywhere from a three to four level building in there. And that's, you know, we'll bring those back to the city when we get done designing it. But behind, if you recall, it was kind of like an L shaped building. And the interior of the L would be where the parking lot was. So we're trying to add parking spots here. So we'll do a parking deck there. So we'll be two stories of of parking.
So there, okay, so there's the first floor, the second floor, and then there's two levels. There's actually a four, three or four levels in the building itself, then you say.
That's correct, which those will be residential. So, you know, what we're kind of going back and forth on is the second level. Does that say? You know, do we need two levels of office slash retail? Or do we need one and a half?
All right. You didn't mention the note levels. I was trying to figure out what that meant. Thank you very much.
Sorry about the confusion.
No, no, not probably me.
Thanks for asking those questions, Paul. It's good that we clarified what we heard. So that's good. Other other questions for Sean while we have him here? Okay, thank you very much for participating this evening and for your update and keep us posted, please.
Already. I appreciate it. Thanks again.
Have a good evening.
Okay. All right.
Uh, next up, under prearranged participation, from Ann Arbor Spark is our representative Jennifer Homestead. Jennifer, I think you're online.
Yes, I am.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me.
You're welcome.
Justin, you were gonna let me, I wasn't sure what my background was going to look like tonight, so I I put up a couple of slides just to have a better background. So I'm going to share those with you.
Yeah, let me open up share settings.
But I guess while Justin's doing that, I just wanted to thank you for your support of regional economic development. You provide funding for economic.
Jennifer's been muted accidentally.
Okay, hello.
There you go.
I didn't do that, though, right?
Yeah, I I think that I think that was me accidentally. Sorry. Are you able to to share now?
Okay, let's see. Yes, I think so.
There we go.
Everybody see, let's see. Okay. Um, don't worry, I'll be quick. Don't let the slides scare you. I just wasn't sure what my background was going to be like. But I wanted to thank you again for letting for participating in our regional economic development. This update this year is obviously a little different. A big focus of our activities this year have been responding to COVID. So in March, we were, when COVID hit and the governor ordered restaurants shut down, we worked with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation to disperse funding in the form of grants to businesses in Washtenaw County. And then about two months later, a foundation approached us. They wanted to help small businesses. And since we already had the infrastructure in place, it would be a lot easier for us to give the money than them. They worked with us. And then, again, later in the summer, there was another program called the Michigan Restart Program. So in total, there was three different grant programs that dispersed $4.6 million in Washtenaw County. The demand was overwhelming. Over 45 million was requested by 2,500 different businesses, and we only had funding for about 900 companies and a total of 6 million. So this is kind of a map of our county and to zero in on Dexter. We were able to deploy over $100,000 in small grants to 20 different companies in the city of Dexter, and the different colors are the different grant programs. And here's just a list of the 20 different companies that were granted funding anywhere from $2,000 to up to $10,000. And as you can see, a large focus on restaurants and small businesses that were closed, forced to close. And some of these, I think most of these has a physical location, but the grant was based on where your business was registered. So there were a couple of places that I know Michelle was like, wait, they're not in Dexter, but they live in Dexter. And that is their business address. And obviously, this was a huge group effort. We had a review committee made up of small business leaders in Washtenaw County. So big thank you to Washington Washington Community College Entrepreneur Center and the Small Business Development Center and a business leader. So that was our review committee. The idea was to get the grants out quickly, right? So you could help. So we did it in record time, and it was it was gratifying, but also hard because, you know, there was so much need and obviously not enough money for everybody. Another thing that we participated in since March is we put up a resource page and have been communicating to businesses through our newsletter about resources that were available. I know, working with Michelle, there was like a retool grant that the state had for companies who were pivoting their business to respond to providing PPE. And so as grant programs become available, we outreach to our companies to let them know of the those resources and that. Website is still active. Um, another thing we did, and this is kind of a cool thing, you can find this on the web if you Google PPP funding. But we wanted to check to make sure like what what companies in Washtenaw County were able to get the payroll protection program. And it's nice to see that over 40 companies in Dexter actually received funding of over $150,000 up to $2 million. And actually, the largest bank in terms of transactions in Dexter was Chelsea State Bank, so very local effort. And then it doesn't provide information, but if you were a business that applied for PPP funding under 150, you didn't have to give your business name, but we we know that over 200 businesses in zip code 48130 did get PPP funding. And so here's a list of the companies that did get funding, and this is all based on it turns right into a grant if you retain those employees. So within Dexter, just for the large PPP funds, we know that companies were able to retain over 1,000 employees. So here's just sort of a listing of those companies and the companies that we typically work with are in bold. This is information, again, it's all public information. And I can give Michelle a copy of the of the presentation. And then, I guess, the highlight was nice to celebrate some good news. So I know Michelle and I both got to participate in the groundbreaking in September at UIS's for their new building. We do see companies in Dexter who are looking for talent. And right now, we're still seeing across the county, there's a mismatch between companies who need people. And obviously, unemployment is a lot larger, but I know our manufacturing companies are still struggling to fill, um, fill positions. So that's just sort of an update on some of our activities. I'm happy to take questions.
Any questions for Jennifer? I thought that was a very informative report, Jennifer. I was wondering about some of those statistics and companies. So it's very helpful to me.
Oh, good.
So you could send, could you send that whole presentation over, did you say?
Sure. Yeah, we have another thing that details it out. But yes, I'm happy, happy to do that. And I could even put it not, I'm not going to try to get too technological. I'll just send it to you. I was like, gonna put it in your chat, but I'll just send it over.
Yeah, if you just send it to Michelle, that would be great. I think we have a question from Zach, if you're still there. Zach, go ahead, please.
Yep. This is a kind of a future looking question since things are all a bit wonky now, but the last couple of times when I went on the the tech trek before COVID world, I would ask the folks there about Dexter, and most of those folks thought it was a podunky place. We still hang gear from posts in our downtown. And so I guess question for you, or at least I'm going to plant the seed for you is what could the city do to start to attract some of those higher tech companies into our town?
Well, Zach, I can always count on you to ask a tech question. So I know. But I guess one thing, it's everything's sort of on hold right now. I mean, we're working with companies. We haven't had a lot of movement, but of interest to Dexter. I mean, when you talk to our brokers in the community, I mean, as people are getting used to working from home, right? And don't want the commute that they like. So when they go back to the office, a lot of people are speculating on how things are going to change. I haven't seen anything yet. I've seen anecdotal things, right? You know, when you read the paper. But in talking, the one thing is like coworking space and things could pop up in downtown. An opportunity for downtown Dexter because people are like, wait, I don't want to commute. And now maybe my company is giving me funding or I can set up a small office, right? I don't want to work from my home, but I don't want to drive that far. So there could be an opportunity. People are speculating, you know, for coworking or people wanting to be closer to home. So smaller communities could benefit from that. And that's something you'll want to position yourself in, right? And obviously, wifi and making sure you have the infrastructure moving ready, right? Companies want move in ready buildings. They don't want to have to do anything. So that's going to be important to make sure working with your landlords and things like that, that the the building space is ready to move in.
Thank you. Jennifer, this is Paul.
Go ahead, Paul.
Paul Cousins up. Michelle gave us a development project update here. And I noticed that Med Hub left the area here to go to Minneapolis. Was there anything that we could have done to stop that? It was going to be inevitable.
No, you know what? They they're a company, I think it was the acquisition, and I think the founders were, you know, didn't want to be part of a a larger a larger company, but that's a company who had won our Fast Track Award for a number of years. We had recognized them. And in the last couple of years, because I reached out to Michelle, like they they were becoming nonresponsive. You know what I mean? So it's just something that unfortunately happens when companies acquire other companies or just sort of the the cycle of a company. So, yeah, no, I don't think there was anything that you could do.
All right. I know some of the guys, and I was surprised to hear that. And I know it's pretty they paid pretty well out there for the people that work there. I know that. Thank you.
But some of them are still working here just from home, but they don't have an office.
Yeah.
So we don't know the stats on that.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So that space is empty then at the Gilbert Building? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they're putting up the whole building for lease. So I've been talking to Swisher about that space and how to how to promote that. But I had, I mean, there's a lot, we're seeing a lot of activity, but nobody like, because I feel like people have more time to strategically plan, but I haven't I haven't seen anything of substantial, like a size of that building that's had had movement in terms of people signing leases. But I know I know Swisher has said they've had a lot of movement on the smaller side, but it is definitely picking up.
Gotcha. Well, thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate the report this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate your time and and thank you for delaying your report from two meetings ago when it got canceled. So good to see you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next up on our agenda is item E, which is approval of the agenda. I see Jim Smith has his hand up.
I'm will we approve the agenda as presented?
Okay, moved by Smith. Scott, you have your hand up?
Support.
Second by Mr. Bell. Thank you both. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, Ms. Jones, if you'd please call the vote to approve the agenda.
Yes. Cousins?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Fisher? Keo?
Yes, motion carries. Okay, we have one public hearing this evening to hear comment on our water and sewer ordinance amendments that are proposed. We're not planning to take action until sometime in November, but we're we've got the had the public hearing scheduled for tonight. So I will open the public hearing, Ms. Jones, at 6:30.
Yes.
Is there any one in the audience or otherwise who would like to make a comment about the proposed amendments? Not seeing any hands up.
Mr. Carter.
Mr. Carter has his hand up.
Oh, I didn't see it. Okay, Jim, welcome.
Thanks, Sean. Quick comment here, and this was not my intended primary reason for being here. I I have thought in the past about the whole issue of having two different water meters and getting billed for each one, even if your system. and getting billed for each one, even if your system essentially goes into hibernation for a big chunk of the season. And I, I actually have, we have that system, not because we have an automatic lawn sprinkler, but because we use it to water our garden, vegetable garden and flowers. And I, I've often thought, wow, I'm paying for this. And then I've immediately thought to myself, I'm pretty well off relative to a lot of people. And this is probably a zero-sum game for the people in the water department, because they got to pay the people and the equipment and everything else, and they're figuring out a reasonable way to apportion this. So if I were to kind of make a squawk and say, can you come up with a way that, that sort of hibernates the bill at the same time that I hibernate my use of the water? I think it's something that I, I'd like to put out there for consideration. On the other hand, if what it means is just that it's going to squeeze the balloon somewhere else and somebody's going to have to pay more because I'm saying, you know, it's kind of a weird situation. I wouldn't want to do that. I wouldn't favor it at all. So I just throw that out there, top of my head.
Thank you for commenting, Jim. Appreciate your attendance on that. Okay, help me if I'm seeing, seeing other people who are not seeing other people whose hands up. I don't see any on the, the blue hands being up. If, if you're calling in on a phone, I should have mentioned earlier, you can hit star nine on your phone, which will also signify a raised hand to us on our participants' window. Okay, Courtney, can I just have you go over the, the major changes? Not, not everyone, just the major stuff, just for you from the packet for the record, please?
Yeah, so this was, this has been a long-term effort to, the biggest reason why we started this was sorry, I'm making sure I unmuted myself, was when, um, we readed the mall study and we needed to adjust our phosphorus limits and just basically bring the ordinance in line with our current, just with current, present day. So that was where it started, was the lowering of the phosphorus limit. And then we just made, basically standardized the billing and collection language because they were conflicting between the two, between water and sewer. Um, we also clarified that the city will supply meters up to and including an inch, so that's basically everything residential. Anything larger than that's paid by the user. And then a lot of the sewer changes were just technical things related to the industrial user capital recovery charges, and like I said, implementing them all. I did send, I included the information because the state has to approve the ordinance, and she did get back to us, provided the feedback. Elaine Venema from F&amp;V helps incorporate it. She's been extremely helpful with this process. And so Deb still needs to give it a final blessing, which I think should be coming anytime. I asked her if she could kind of expedite that so that I can finish this before my last day. So I don't, we've made all of her changes, so she should be providing that. That's why I don't have council adopting it. Plus, I just need to go through for the fine tuning of the section references and things. So I just wanted to make sure there were no further comments on it before we kind of finalize it for adoption, but I'm hoping really significantly hoping that that will be either the first or second meeting in November.
Okay.
But it's not too much that just an average user, the changes that, you know, would, would impact an average user. There are a lot more on the technical side for industrial users.
Thank you for outlining that for those listening in council. Do I see any other hands? Are there any other hands on screens that I'm not seeing? Okay, again, we'll see this back either next meeting on the ninth of November or the following meeting in November likely. So we're down to non-arranged participation. This is the first of two opportunities on the agenda for those attending to speak on any topic. Is there anyone that wishes to speak this evening?
Sean, can you close the public hearing?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yeah, we'll close the public hearing at 6:35. Thank you for that reminder. Make that note, too. Okay. All right. Got ahead of myself. Item G, non-arranged participation. Mr. McCarter, I see your blue hand up. Thank you. And welcome.
Thanks again. Yeah, I apologize for not using my blue hand a few minutes ago. I
No problem.
Didn't have my participant window open. Um, I originally, what I had to say tonight got pre, when I went through the packet. Because I noticed that a letter from a neighbor of mine, it's just a, a long block up the street, was in the packet. And I'm trying to go to the page in the packet. I think it's like
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven, there we are. Okay. There are, thank you. Um, yeah, Louis Serene, he lives right up the street, drives by our house all the time with his wife. There were three things in that letter that jumped out at me. The first one is that there, there is a, there is a call for affordable housing there, which I think is really important and something I support. And it, and it's a painful one to read because of his long history in the village and the situation that he faces in wanting to stay in the, in the community. So, you know, the, the idea of affordable housing as one of the ways of expressing our our civic interest in people who have, are less fortunate to me is, is a value that's extremely important. The second thing in that that I wanted to point out is that the beginning of the letter refers, what caught my eye was that it refers to the petition that was circulated in support of the charter amendment that's on the ballot. And I'm going to quote from it. It says, yes, I did sign that petition only to get, I believe this would have been read, read, only to get rid of the person doing the petition. I did not want to get in an argument with her. I want officials, officials to know that entry voted no. And what I immediately thought about there was going back to one of the meetings with Avalon where one of the leaders of the so-called Citizens for Dexter, Citizens for Responsible Government talked about the petition signatories and how the petition was clearly in opposition. It was a way to prevent the Avalon project and how all of the signers of the petition were in opposition to that project. And I read this letter from Louis, and I went, ooh, yeah, what he said. And I think I made a comment at that May meeting about this situation. So that's the second thing. The third thing I wanted to mention and i- is that at the last, I was not able to attend the last meeting. I did get to view it and look at the materials, which I often do after the fact if I can't attend. And I, I am absolutely dismayed that Jamie Griffin, who is one of the co-leaders of this DCRG group and a current council candidate, resurrected dubious conflict of interest charges at council members and city manager Courtney Nichols. And I believe that our council and the paid staff deserve much, much better respect than what's shown at that meeting, particularly because Courtney is leaving after 13 years of serving this community, when she didn't have to stick around that long. I remember when she came, and I believe that she's, she's generated exceptional work products, has had a very high ethical standard, and has acted on, on the best, in the best interest of our community, even though she may not stay here. And from a high set, a high-quality set of personal values. So it's kind of tragic to me that Jamie would choose to lob hand grenades into that meeting, particularly at the time when there was a resolution on the agenda to accept Courtney's resignation as she moves to a new job. She just didn't deserve that, nor did the members of the council. And I think we're going to be really fortunate that we can find somebody who is as qualified and dedicated as Courtney. And it, it, when we do, if we do, and it's big shoes, sorry, Courtney. Hopefully, it's going to be somebody who's going to be able to be on the receiving end of much better comments from the citizens of Dexter. I've spoken before, what, what I consider to be sort of citizens' contract when you move into the public sphere for respect and honesty and so forth. And last week just did not show that. I would, I mean, it's particularly because of the timing with Courtney's departure. But it's also just particularly difficult in this time when so many people are struggling emotionally, with their jobs, with their families, with school, children, all of these things. And to resurrect that and lay it out in the way that it happened, I just, I, Courtney, I feel so badly for you. I feel badly for the council. And I appreciate the fact that there are a couple of people on the call. It's Stephanie is one, I think, who spoke up shortly thereafter. So I, I, I am probably out of time, am I not, Mr. Kio?
Pretty close, yes, sir.
Okay, I, I think I'll leave it at that then. I'm sad that you're leaving, Courtney. I know this is last, you know, not your last session. I hope I'll be back, but I can't guarantee it to, to give you a hat's up. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. McCarter, for your comments, as always. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Justin, help me if I'm missing somebody or anyone.
Paul would like to speak.
Mr. Cousins.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Referring back to the last meeting that we had and the agenda item of reports by the mayor and the council. There was a motion to eliminate the council report, council reports in the past, and I'd just like to make a comment on that and, and I'll move forward. Being an old biology teacher, reminded of the lessons that we had when we taught about starfish. And starfish are unique individuals, a lot of different styles of them, colors, arms. Uh, but one thing they found out that happened with starfish is that that the people that were harvesting clams and mussels and oysters, when they brought them up, they also brought up starfish. And so they think that would kill them because they knew the starfish ate the clams and oysters. So they would hack them in two and throw them back in, not realizing that starfish have what they call a regeneration process. And regeneration process means that if you have some part of the main part of that organism, then a new organism can grow from there. Instead of having one, you may have three or four or five. So with this now and the silencing, as I believe I was in the interpretation of the report, I say the interpretation of the report, uh, I mean that it doesn't say that it has to be written. A report can be oral, and that's what I usually did when I referred to my report that I had there with the commentary about our rules that we had. So, um, I think what you've just done is hacked the starfish into three parts so that I can make comments at each one of these public hearings and also at the report at the end for council comments at the end of the meeting. So you've gone from one to three now. So to make comments on that, I would have to wait till the next meeting to reply to the mayor or to anybody else that made any comments on that area. And that's always two or three weeks away, and I thought it's more important that we have the comments to be at that point in time. And so the mayor's report on page 79 of the agenda on October the 12th is what I was going to refer to. And as I remember, remember that there are times I've made comments to these, but at no time did I ever make any comments to anything the mayor said, if he didn't say anything about the fire hall or give us his, his opinion about it. And I did use the word poison the water because I think it does. And so with that, I refer to the words that he used in this report, common ground. That was an interesting concept. But I'm not sure that in the civics in middle school or in government and high school that you ever learned about common ground after a vote was taken. The majority in the democratic process generally is that they have lost the issue and a majority generally carries, carries out the issues with the help of staff. And that's exactly what we should be doing in this process with their, the, the fire hall and the city hall as well. And so to talk about common ground now and the statements about housing people, fire people in the present building, industry modeling it, I think flies against the issues that, and the actions that we've taken. Also remind you that mayor always concludes his report asking if we have any comments or questions on his report. And yet, the very next item, council reports, I did that, but I never ever did it unless he made a comment that was contrary to what we'd already decided. And so I cannot refer to writing in the written rules. I don't think there's any interpretation of a report that says it has to be in writing and it can be in, in, in an oral argument or an oral, oral report. And with that, I guess my time was probably up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Paul. Is there anyone else who would like to speak under non-arranged? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item H, which is communications. We have two, our upcoming meeting list and the letter from Louis Serani that, Serani, that was referenced earlier. Are there any council comments or staff questions or comments related to the communications? Okay, I think they're seeing none, so I'm going to move down to our first report tonight from our treasurer, finance director, assessor, Ms. Marie Sherry. Welcome, Marie.
Hello, council.
Good evening.
First, I, I want to apologize if a cat pops up. He's 22 years old and he likes to boom bap. So he's 22. You have my written report. I would like to call out how absolutely wonderful I think it is that we're almost 73% funded in our OPEB. A couple of years ago, the state of Michigan addressed the fact that many communities had not looked at this particular liability, but our council was way ahead of times. And, um, it took a lot of discipline to, to get to this point, so I'm, I'm really proud of Dexter for, for getting to an, almost 73% funding. The other thing I did want to mention that is in my report was that we are going to go live with Invoice Cloud, which is the new payment processing service on November 9th. We plan on including in inserts in the utility bill and in the tax bill, letting people know about this new service and how to access it and the fees involved with it, with the hope of transitioning ACHs off after, at the first bill after the new year. So, um, or maybe the second bill, depends on how, how the response to it goes. So those are the two things I just wanted to update or, or touch on from my report. And now just asking if anybody has any questions.
I'm not seeing any. I think everybody's happy with the, the report there, Marie.
Great.
Thank you for your good work, as well as I'd like to comment, compliment you on your budget document is included as part of our consent agenda.
Oh, thank you.
Really well done, really well-done document. I know that more than, more members of staff than just yourself contribute to that, but
Absolutely.
On, on the whole, uh, another very well-presented document. I assume that that will be put on our website here soon?
Yes, as soon as, as soon as council accepts it, it'll go on the website and then we'll send it off for the budget award.
Great, great. Great, great, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Good work. Our next report this evening is from our public services superintendent. Welcome, Dan.
Good evening, council. I provide you with a two-week report, it only seems like a week ago, but two-week report. I do have just a couple of updates on my report. Leaves are going fine, the guys are able to get through town in two to three days, they're coming down pretty strong for us. Hydrant flushing was completed and winterizing of the hydrants was completed late last week. Our twenty-twenty preventative sewer main cleaning and lift stations were all completed late last week also. That's all I have for updates, is there any questions on my written report?
I'm not seeing any blue hands. Am I missing anybody waving their hand? Yes, I guess not, nobody's saying anything, so Dan, looks like you're gonna get off easy this evening.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, tell everybody thanks and get the snowplows ready.
They're getting ready, in between sucking leaves. I do have a question, I do. Have we talked about, and I've missed, when we're thinking about taking the barricades down for all of the restaurants downtown, have we discussed that, I missed that? Speaking of snow.
I believe that's the end of November, Michelle, help me here.
Yes, the outdoor seating areas that are in the, on-street parking run until November thirtieth, and hopefully we don't have any snow before that. But all of the, all of the businesses that are currently operating those have been made aware and I will continue to routinely remind them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next up is our community development manager, Michelle, how are you?
I'm fine, how's council today?
Okay.
Feel good.
How are you, Michelle?
Yay, hey, three out of seven, that's not bad. Okay, so before I go into any verbal updates, do you have any questions on my report? Okie dokie, Mr. Smith, did I see that hand?
Yeah. One of the first things on your report was about the fireworks.
Yes.
Were you gonna talk more about that?
Yep, I was gonna bring it up, it's a temporary special event, I've spoken with the gentleman twice. If he can provide the information, as I've identified it in the, in my memo. And the property owner signs the application as well, then he, he could be granted a temporary special event permit. Understand also, there are specific rules that he has to follow through the state of Michigan. And any temporary special event permit that might come from my office would certainly require that he follow all local, regional and state and federal regulations and laws.
Now, I, I know that typically every year there's usually a sale of fireworks there by Muggin Bops on Baker Road.
If there has been, it's been done without a permit, nobody's ever asked for a permit before, so I don't.
I think it's been a while since that's been up.
I mean, I don't think it happened this year, but other years, it seems to be a regular thing.
Okay, I was not aware of it, but Mike and I will keep an eye out for it in case that is something that comes up.
Because I was just curious, you know, whether we want to, you know, limit the number of locations for that. Yeah.
I, I don't think we're able to per state law.
And that's a question of, you know, how soon do you need to act on this, or can we wait and see what the pandemic's doing, you know? This may be something that, you know, is drawing people during that time period. And we may want to have some say, you know, whether that actually happens then or not.
So the reason that the gentleman has already contacted is he gets this done early so that he gets his stuff into the state. So that by the time, excuse me, he does this for a number of sites, another number of locations throughout the state. So managing all those at the last minute becomes a hassle, obviously, for him. I don't believe we could use the COVID situation as a reason to, to hold off or even deny the application. Because when it comes to commerce, the, the different rules and regulations haven't prevented us from creating situations like in our downtown where you want people to, to be, to be shopping, to be eating, to be dining, et cetera. I, I don't think it's something that's gonna create a lot of people coming around. Certainly not, it's certainly not going to be like it would be if, if it was open during the site or mill being open at the same time. So I, I hope that gives some comfort for you.
Okay, thank you.
So, excuse me, one of the things I wanted to highlight in my report is you may have noticed that that there are, some of the text is highlighted in blue or it's blue instead of black ink. That means that, that's, that's linked, it's activated, you can actually click like on the Med Hub in the items that have not been, that were from last time. The for lease or for sale and lease are highlighted or they're in blue. You can link to see the actual document that is the marketing brochure for the lease and for the sale. I've been trying to do that so that you don't have a lot of attached paperwork where I can provide that for you, so. The other thing, and I'll have a more detailed notation of it. Excuse me, I'm so sorry. For my next report is Sheer Bliss, which is on the second floor of the corner building at the corner of Main and Broad. Above Artisticah, she's actually going to be relocating and expanding to a larger space. It's the noggin space at three-two-one-nine Broad Street. The old Bush's place there. And she's not going to be doing any interior remodeling, just moving into that site. Noggins did not reopen after the, after the lockdown. I've not been able to get a hold of the, the business owner, but she's going to be taking that space. It will provide her with a lot more foot traffic and I think it's going to be a really positive move for her business. And that will leave a, a space above what she's vacating for maybe a small office for someone. And the, the interesting thing is both that property and the one she's moving to are owned by the same landlord, so. And that's it, that's all I've got for updates, oh, I forgot, one more. We're going to have a Christmas tree in Monument Park. Kurt and I have been finalizing or working with different Christmas tree vendors or wholesalers. And we found one local that the price is great and it's going to be a beautiful fourteen-foot tree that we'll pick out. He'll get it all lit up and it'll be beautiful.
Very good. Very good, Michelle, real quick, just on your, on your report, I know there's no update, but any verbal update or any progress on the Millennium Place and the code issue?
I spoke with Jack. He's mulling over whether he's going to ask the chief for a written explanation. And citing of codes as to what the requirements are. He, once he makes that decision whether he is or isn't going to ask, if he does not ask, excuse me, then I will ask, because the planning commission has asked me to ask chief for that. I figured if the applicant was going to do it, he could just share that, so. But he hasn't made his mind up yet.
I see.
There is no movement, there is no movement.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for the updates. Any other questions for Michelle on her report, a verbal or written?
No question, Michelle, I shared this page one-fourteen with the chamber this morning and let them know of a lot of the things that were going on. And they were appreciative of that so that they could kind of narrow in on a few things that they need to think they needed to do as well. And anytime you have that, or if you have any other information, if you could just share that with them. That would be something that would be helpful to them as they try to rebuild that, that organization and get new members.
Absolutely. Sean, Alex Gilbert has his hand up.
Yep, I see he and Donna, I got, Alex, why don't you go first and then Donna Fisher, please?
I had a quick question, oh, I'm sorry.
No, floor is yours, Alex.
Okay, I had a quick question about the holiday day tree that we're putting up in the park. Um, is there anything that we could add potentially to incorporate other cultures or celebrations just so that potentially more people can feel as if they're represented? I'm not sure if there's anything, but I just thought it'd be something that could be good to consider.
There could, I don't see why not personally, Alex. If council has no objections, could Kurt and I work with Alex on ways to do that?
Sure. Yep, go for it.
Okay.
I can supply a Festivus poll if you want to go down that road.
Excellent.
Okay, Alex, we'll get in touch, okay?
Thank you so much, I look forward to it.
Nice suggestion. Ms. Fisher?
Yeah, Michelle, how will we, you will be able to control how many fireworks displays or merchants we would have? Say the guy at Muggin Box came back and then we would have this, that's something that you would look after?
Correct, ma'am.
Okay, okay, just want to make sure.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My strong idea of the other comment is that when you talk about this blue color, as colorblind people can't see that at all, okay?
It's also underlying, Paul.
Yeah, I saw, I saw that was underlying, that helped. And speaking of Christmas trees, it reminds me of the time when Pat was working that I went out with the three boys to buy a tree and we went out. And I thought it was a perfect tree and we came home and it was one of those you chop down and brought back. And Pat looks at it and says, why did you buy a brown tree? And I said, it's not brown, it's green, and the boy said, we tried to tell dad, but he wouldn't listen, so. I hope that, I'm glad that you didn't ask me to be on the committee to choose the tree. At all for cities.
Thanks, Paul.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. I'm gonna move down to our city manager report, Ms. Nichols, are you ready?
I am, so I was just gonna give a quick election update since that's kind of the hot topic around the office. A lot of phone calls, people coming in, so we've issued twenty-one-hundred-and-forty-nine ballots so far, and we've received seventeen-hundred-and-seven of them back. So we are actually only waiting for about four-hundred-and-forty-two that have not been returned, which is pretty remarkable with still weeks ago. I think we took in about a hundred-and-ten today, mostly through the drop box. So it's about a sixty-one percent turnout if everybody with an absentee ballot returns their ballot, so. We are open Saturday from nine to five for anybody that needs absentee voting or registering to vote. One, and then Monday until four PM, you can do those things. One thing we did want to mention that's getting some press is that if you are, if you know of anyone that hasn't returned their ballot and they don't intend to because they want to vote at the polls, it'll really save a lot of time if they surrender that ballot to us at the office ahead of time, because then they won't have to do the paperwork at the polls, we can just take care of that here. It'll help the lines and there won't be any time spent on it there, so if you know of anybody that's like, oh yeah, I'm gonna go to the polls. Then please have them return their ballots to us. They can also do that at the polls, but like I said, it's just gonna be quicker. Watts Suzanne Flowers put a counter on our new trail. It was on there from the twelfth of October to the twenty-third of October. So the average was four-hundred-and-twelve people or crossing of the counter per day. That went up to seven-hundred-and-twenty-nine on the weekends, so it's definitely getting a lot of use. She just kind of did that because they had the counter and she lives in Dexter in Lima Township, so she put it out there. We did get a park use permit from the chamber for their ice sculptures. I don't think it's an issue to have the ice sculptures on display, kind of like the scarecrows have been on display. My only concern was that as part of that request, they did mention their ice sculpture demonstration. And they didn't think that would draw that many people and, you know, they'd spread them out, but I was just thinking that, you know, perhaps, you know, they're doing virtual events and doing different things. But I was thinking about telling them that, you know, we're okay with having the carvings. They are gonna spread them out near the downtown businesses who participate. So I don't think it's an issue for us to have the carvings outside, but I was going to kind of steer them away from having any demos. If council's kind of generally agreeable with that.
There was a little discussion of that today, but not very much, so what do you mean by a demo, those people that are doing it, are standing there carving it and you're you don't want people around them while they're doing that, is that what you're?
Right, I mean, anything, so our goal right is meant to not encourage like uncontrolled crowds, and so I don't know. That would be the only part of it that I would be concerned about because I think, you know, if they have the sculptures, that's not a big deal or someone's out there doing it. But I don't know that I'd want them to like invite people to a demo in the park.
I, I, okay, I, I don't think that happened before, there were a couple, they had two of them previously with the demos, but they, but, but people did stand around and watch them carve. And so I guess the question is, is there, in your mind, is there a difference between those two things?
I think the difference would be like inviting people to watch them carve and just happen to have them out there carving and people wander by and see them carving.
Okay, thank you.
That's how I would see the difference.
All right, thank you. Is everybody else okay with that, because we did have that discussion today and that those plans need to go forward?
Yeah, I, I just think we don't want to draw specific attention to any one event or point of focus, but I, you know, if they're, if they're, if they're doing a demonstration, somebody stops by and watches, I, I think that's different.
I mean, if they're just carving them, because I don't know where they actually carve them, but if they carve, you know, and they're doing it, that's fine, but not invite people to, you know, to an event for it, I guess, would be my point to the chamber.
All right.
And I'm glad they asked, you know, plenty of time to work it out, because the event's not for several months.
Right, I think it's just, well, sixteenth or seventeenth of January, I think.
So I'll give them that guidance that, you know, it's okay, they have them out or have people doing it, just don't, you know, make it an event. And it sounds like they're gonna do more, like I said, virtually this year.
It's the sixteenth of January.
January sixteenth, Paul?
Yeah, it's a Saturday.
Thank you.
Um, let's see, there is anything else?
Donna, did you have your hand up?
Well, I was just gonna make a comment, and then I, I felt like the conversation was kind of wrapped up, but it seems that a virtual of that, of that demonstration probably would work well.
Yeah.
That's all I was just gonna make a comment.
No, thanks, I can throw that out there.
Thank you.
Let's see, oh, so I included kind of an example of a possible tree trimming map so that we could get on sort of a five-year rotating schedule for trimming. I think that that would be helpful to kind of, you know, we're doing that with the sewer system, we do, you know, regular maintenance on a lot of things. And I think that it would make sense so that we're on more of a, a regular schedule, I mean, the trees do end up impacting garbage pickup and leaf pickup and everything that happens along the side of the road. And, you know, keeping kind of a consistent trimming schedule, I think, would be helpful. I think there's too much more unless oh, we are finishing, well, I guess we can talk about that under. oh, we are finishing. Well, I guess we can talk about that under L one. So I think I'm done.
Okay. Uh, questions for Courtney?
I have, I have one. The last, last page, one twenty-six. It has the tree canopy cover.
Yeah.
And I see colors here. I think I can identify them fairly well now.
Yeah.
They're big, okay. But else, I don't see a corresponding, maybe I'm missing a corresponding, what the numbers mean?
So this would be what I, I referenced in my report. So what we were thinking was putting the city on a five-year cycle of trimming the trees.
Five-year cycle that you have here for, to the trimming, okay?
Yeah. And then the D D A would be responsible for three, which is their district. So we would pick one or two or, you know, decide which zone to start with and then run it through.
So when you say tree trimming, are you talking only those that are contiguous to the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Or you talk about what? One of those contiguous to the sidewalk?
Anything in the right of way.
Anything in the right of way?
Yeah, I mean, the alleys we'd have to think about a little bit, but I mean, we could include them as well. Just, you know, it just depends on cost.
Okay, and so I'm in number five.
Yeah.
Uh, do I wait till number five to call somebody if I find a tree that's? Or, uh, or do we, can I call somebody at D P W and say, this one is, uh, cracked and it's ready to fall down on my house or?
Dead dying and disease. Yeah, dead dying and disease. We would do it anytime. This is just preventative maintenance tree trimming, you know, to get it out of the way of trash trucks and leaf machines and those sorts of things.
Got you. Okay.
And the health of the tree.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. But yeah, we would definitely still do, you know, any necessary deadness. We would take those out whenever.
All right, thank you.
Good point.
Yeah, thanks for putting that together, Courtney.
Smart.
Any other hands in the air there? I just flipped through here. I'm not seeing any. Okay, um, my report is pretty short. I spent, uh, the better part of my activities working to try and, uh, prepare the new business item L three for council. So we can, uh, talk about that a little bit later, uh, down in the agenda. Um, we did, um, have a special D D A meeting that occurred on Thursday morning. And the D D A did, uh, pass a resolution authorizing, um, the D D A to accept an assignment of the, uh, that D T E substation property. Um, that I only mentioned that because that action is related to our, our action, uh, new business item L one. Um, so it was important that the D D A took action so that we were aware of that. Uh, that was one of the reasons we held the report because I wanted to report on that. And then, um, we did have a D A F D meeting also on the evening of the twenty-second. Um, there were very few questions, uh, on the chief's, uh, draft spending plan. And, um, I, I did send that out to all of you, uh, council, as I mentioned at the last meeting, I think. So you should all have that in your inbox. If you didn't receive it, please give me a call or send me a text or let me know and I'll, I'll find a way to get you another copy or another, another email on it. Um, the chief continues to do a good job of putting that together, putting that in front of us and, um, we're accumulating a little fund balance. Uh, we're, uh, coming in with a surplus each year and able to build up some reserves for some key, key future things. So um, it's very good. The, the budget does include adding the fourth firefighter uh, on shift. Uh, we've got that sort of staggered throughout next year in hopes of, uh, of, of getting a grant to help pay for that. But, um, once the Webster station comes online, the intention is to fund that that fourth full-time firefighter, which means we'll be hiring, uh, next year. So a lot of good things going on there. Uh, we did extend the chief's, uh, agreement with the D A F D by two years. Um, you got a modest raise and an increase in his vehicle allowance, uh, continues to do a good job for us. So I wanted everybody to know that. Uh, and then, uh, last but not least, we do have a date picked for our next fire union negotiation meeting with the local forty-ninety firefighters and their representatives, and that is this Thursday. Um, I forget the time, four thirty or four o'clock or something, but it's this, this Thursday, uh, afternoon. So I wanted to let you know that date as well. Um, please be safe on Halloween if you choose to participate in Halloween. Um, read the guidelines that the C D C has put out there. Make sure they haven't changed or if they've been updated. Be smart, stay apart, wear a mask. I guess that's fitting for Halloween, but wear a mask. Um, if you're not participating as a person passing out candy, turn your lights off. Don't, uh, attract unnecessary attention to your house. And, uh, let's just get through this safely if, if you do participate. So happy Halloween, everyone. Uh, does anybody have any questions for me? Okay. I'm not seeing any hands or hearing any voices. So, um, we have no council member reports this evening.
Tom, may I ask, not to belabor the point, but ask a question on that?
Sure, sir.
You voted, you voted last time to, uh, to eliminate the one, uh, having a conversation with Mr. Smith today. He said that wasn't for the future. Um, so when we do a report, is it going to be required that it be written? Can it be oral or can it be a combo? And is the timing of the report that you want to speak or hand, hand it in still at Monday at five P M?
So there's, there were, Paul, there were a number of questions there. So let me try and take them in the order you gave them to me or close. And if I miss one, I'll come back. Okay?
Thanks.
Um, so you know, I think, I think I want to start off by answering the question that, first of all, if you want to put a council report or if you want to request an item on the packet, those are due at five P M on the Monday proceeding, you know, one week prior to the council meeting. That's still not changed. That's the same as it's always been.
All right, thank you.
Okay, I think that, I think that, um, you know, that our future council here has to have a discussion about this item because this was not, this was something that we added over the last whatever, a couple of years. Okay. And it was, i- in my understanding, it was intended to be primarily a written report. Okay, because we do have a council member report section at the end of the agenda, which was the approved agenda that we have. Okay. And, and when we, when we voted to add this, one of the, one of the points that was made at the time was that the council member reports are at the end of the agenda and people may not be around to hear what they have to say. So I don't have any problem under this number eight council member reports. I don't have any problem if it's written or verbal. Okay, we've had a history here. We don't tell people that they're not allowed to communicate to us. Okay, that's not what we're trying to do here. Okay, but I don't think that we need to have items in the packet that are council rules that are online that are known by everybody, repeated over and over and over. I mean, it, it, I think the intention is it's supposed to be something unique, something you want to call attention to. That's my own personal feeling, but I think the next council needs to talk about the use of this. I personally am okay if, if somebody has a verbal report to give. I mean, frankly, they can give it under any number of different places on the agenda. Um, but whether it's written or oral, Paul, I don't have a problem with it. But the intention is that you would submit it by five o'clock on, on the Monday prior. Um, uh, Zach has been good about, uh, at least notifying that he's gonna submit a report and then it's usually there on Tuesday morning the following day. But at least the notice is in by five. So there's a couple of angles of this that I'd like to clarify when the new council sits. Whether it's changed by one member or, or three, I don't know at this point. But I definitely think we're gonna need to talk about it. So we're all clear on it because it's not meant to be an item that creates arguments amongst council members. It's meant to be something that can share information in a, in a, in a positive way about the community. We're all representatives of the community. Um, and I think we've gotten ourselves a little on track, off track. So I hope to hope to rectify that with the communication there. A meeting of some type, Paul.
Hey, I'll, I'll accept that for now that that's, uh, something I would agree to that we do have need to have the discussion. And, uh, I guess my only other comment would be is that, yeah, you know, you, some of us think on our feet well and some don't. And so if there's been a comment and I, and Sean, you always ask the question afterwards, is there any comments or questions about my report? And that would either come then or have to be at the end of the meeting and, you know, I could ignore the rest of the meeting between point A and point B and start writing my comments, or I could just give it then, whatever I feel that I need to do. But I guess the point is, is that I, I agree with you that we'll need to have a discussion. I'm, I'm looking forward to having that discussion.
Okay, I think we can, I think we can work through it. Um, you know, I, I think communication happens two ways, and I think it's important that we each give each other a chance to ask questions when, when we say something. So, um, I look forward to it as well. So thank you for the question on that, Paul. Uh, with that, if we're okay, I'm gonna move on to consent agenda this evening. There's, um, quite a big consent agenda, six items on the consent agenda. Uh, Donna Fisher has her hand up. Donna?
I move we approve the six items on the consent agenda, bills and payroll and the amount of one million eighty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. Um, to, um, to prove the quote from O'Donnell for the work done. Uh, it worked to be done on the well, uh, not to exceed ten thousand, one hundred dollars. Um, to accept the first quarter budget amendments, to accept the twenty-twenty-one budget document, the, um, oh, to consider the, the virtual meeting policy and the payment of invoices related to the sewer reconnection on Grand.
Okay, thank you, Donna. That was a long motion and I appreciate you making it. Motion by Ms. Fisher. I see Mr. Smith has his hand up.
Yes, I'll support the motion.
Okay, second by Mr. Smith. So we have a motion in a second. Ms. Jones, can you call the vote to approve the consent agenda, please?
Yes. Bell?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Motion carries on the consent agenda. Uh, we are down to item K, which is old business. And we have an item, um, K one, consideration of city office slash meeting space, which was postponed from our October meeting of two thousand twenty.
Staff provide an overview of the new information.
I'm sorry, Zach. Go ahead. Say it, say it again. I didn't hear you clearly.
Staff provide a brief overview of the new information they provided.
Yeah, I think that's a good place to start. Thank you for the suggestion.
Okay, so we, well, I guess I'll just kind of go through. I mean, some of this was on last, um, packet and some of it wasn't. So we did get an estimate from partners to put together an internal plan. David thought that'd be about four to five hours worth of work. Um, something we wouldn't necessarily need on formal council approval on. We also have the information provided from Oxford regarding thirty-four hundred feet, square feet in Dexter Crossing. Uh, Dan Cuny has, uh, state of the hill, he would allow us to continue to rent the current senior center space starting in January for the same rent we were paying the senior center, which was about eighty dollars a meeting. And then, um, we received two calls because people heard that we were looking for office space. One from Matt Schuster, who's the likely future owner of the Encore building that's downtown, who provided an offer for sixty-eight hundred square feet. And then also, um, right before we put the packet out, actually, um, Jeff Evans provided information on space available at, I believe what's referred to as an extra commerce building, which is eight zero zero five and or eight zero zero seven main. I believe one of those spaces was the former colorable site. Um, they had kept an office in Dexter for a while after they moved out of the Baker Road property. And then I also, um, provided clarification on what a triple net lease means, um, just because we were throwing that term around and, um, you know, we don't commonly talk about stuff like that. So I wanted to include what that meant. So that's the updates since the last meeting.
Thank you, Courtney. Um, I, I don't know if, uh, I don't see any hands up, so I'm just gonna jump in. I, I, um, you know, we have the ability to do virtual meetings through the end of the year. And I assume that we'll be doing those unless council decides otherwise, um, you know, for obvious good reasons. Um, I'm actually excited about the the future potential of the Norfolk option. And I don't quite know, you know, whether this council or the, the one that's seated here in a, you know, in a couple of weeks will share that excitement or not share that excitement, um, as a general whole. But, um, you know, I'm, I'm thinking that we should we should accept the use of the senior center like we had prior so that we can at least have a space to meet, one that we know can function and work. Uh, and it would give us some time to think about, you know, how to set the room up and spread out and that kind of thing. Um, I think at a minimum, we should, we should take that action to notify them of that interest, uh, uh, you know, assuming there's support to do that. I'd rather do that, uh, or I'd rather not jump on any of the other ones pending an understanding of the Norfolk option because I don't want to move twice if we don't have to, I guess. If that makes any sense, that's kind of where my head was.
Is that a motion?
Well, I don't get to make motions, Scott. Um, so I, I, I just kind of ramble and see what happens. Uh, Mr. Smith has his hand up.
I didn't know whether Scott was gonna go ahead and make a motion or?
Uh, it's yours, Jim.
Okay, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we, uh, errant to an agreement with Encore to rent space in the, uh, current senior center uh, for our meetings beginning in January twenty twenty-one.
Okay, thank you for that. Motion by Smith.
I'll second.
Second by Knight. Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.
Uh, council discussion. Zach, I see your hand, I think.
Yep, um, a, a couple of concerns with that is I understand why the Encore wants to rent that space to us. It's revenue. But in my talks with folks associated with the senior center, they are scared to death of having us in there for meetings and are likely going to require a deep cleaning after every time we use that building, which is not very cheap or fun or easy to do. So I don't, I don't see that as a long-term thing and it's gonna cause stress um, tenants and us and the property owner. Um, I'm also, I'd also say that the, any future at thirty forty-five, thirty forty-five broad, if that's what the city intends to go to, um, although that has not been decided. The land entitlement process from, from today until lights turned on is, is likely two to three years. So we have two to three years more temporary figuring out, um, under which time Encore is going to likely get, uh, more busy, not be available for that space. Um, and I'd hate to see us try to schlep around to, uh, different rooms throughout the community, um, if we get turned away from there. Um, in addition to the challenge for staff, it's, um, difficult to be a good public body when folks don't know we're meeting every time. So I think we ought to get proper fix that puts things in one place that's safer for staff to work throughout the day. That's it. I, I don't support this without the blessing of the senior center.
Okay. Thanks, Zach. Uh, Donna, I see your hand up, please?
Yeah.
And then Julie, then Julie.
Um, I think, I don't, I don't see Julie's, but she can go first.
No, go ahead, Donna. You're up.
Um, did you, did, did you get that direction from the president of the board or from the director about the deep cleaning piece? Or is that just something that people have discussed?
I've been talking with, uh, Mr. Carson.
Okay.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Julie, did you have a comment? I saw your hand at one point.
Yes, yes, I do. Actually, I have a, I have a question of clarification. If we contract with the Encore for the senior center, this would strictly be for meetings, not moving the offices there, is that correct?
Right.
Correct.
And this would not only be council meetings, but also DDA and planning commission, CBA.
It would be anything that we do on Monday nights.
Okay.
So we would have to, you know, there are some other things we'd have to work out. But it would at least be for what we do on Monday nights. And the reason behind that is because
They met early Thursday mornings, correct?
Right, no, it doesn't. The main issue we have is meetings where you have to post public notices. And that is EBA council planning commission and everything that we do on Mondays. So we would still have to figure out parks and DDA. And I'm not saying we couldn't use the, the space, but our goal was, what are we going to do about our Monday meetings? Because those are the ones where we have to publish public hearing notices 30 days in advance, or, you know, 10, 15 days in advance.
Thank you for answering that.
We're hoping that even with, even if council has to meet in person, that doesn't mean that we still can't have the virtual option for people. So if something like DDA does get moved around, it's not as big of a deal because people could still join virtually and they don't have public hearings. So. I mean, we're hoping that even with the in-person, even with council, we would have, continue to have a virtual option. We'd purchase equipment to that, to that end.
Okay. Thank you.
So, go ahead, Paul.
Go ahead, go ahead, Sean.
Okay, all right, I was just gonna, I was just gonna respond, you know, a little bit to Zach. I think that, Zach, you're, you're, you're right in your thinking that we have, you know, probably two to three years. You know, given there's a site plan process and a design process and an approval process and construction and all that stuff before any building might even be ready, if we were talking about the Norfolk thing. I, I think my thoughts there are just to you know, allow the new council to sit and figure that, that out as we approach the, the potential letter of intent discussion. You know, whether it's in December, we get an update from Norfolk or, or January. I guess that was my thought there. I didn't mean to like completely cut those off, but I was just stating my preference for the other one. But if, if, obviously if the, you know, the Norfolk thing doesn't turn, I would agree, we have to we, we have to find a better option for the, for the, you know, our staff. We can't stay above the bank. Paul, I'm done. Sorry. Thank you.
No, it all feels like you spoke first. I was up there today for an event. There were only four people allowed in the room. As a great big room.
Talking about the senior center, Paul?
Yep.
Okay, sorry.
You said, I'm sorry. I was up there, there was only four people allowed in that space. There were some other chairs, but for this event, it was only for four people. There were three that were there, plus the presenter. You were tested, asked the questions and tested before you go in with, you know, with your thermometer. They you had to, had it hand sanitized. You walked in, you sat down, you went through your event, and you came in one way and went out another. You're going out the side door. I haven't had any discussions with Mr. Carson about it. I or Mrs. Fisher or anybody, but I would be pretty shocked if they had let this to happen. And you got to realize that the word is senior. All those people that are there are in that vulnerable category that use that at all. Okay?
Are they even using it, though?
Yeah, they were used, well, for these events, they are. I can say that.
Well, the, the thing is, they don't have, I mean, the, the reason we went to Encore is because after January 1st, the senior center can't, doesn't have any say over what goes on in the building. So that's between Encore and the senior center, in my opinion, because the city is working directly with Encore, the landlord, the owner of the building. And so I think if the senior center has an issue, then they need to take that up with Dan. But the city has to work with the person who has the power to rent the space, which is Encore.
I, I understand. That's what my point is. I don't understand why it would even allow it. Okay? The senior center would allow that to happen if Zach is correct about the deep cleaning need every time. Okay? Somebody's going to have to pay for that. But they were, they were very cautious today, just for us going in there. The three people and the presenter, okay? And Wendy was there, and the, the lady that does the, the food was there. There was only that, there was total six people in the building, total. And so and, and what you had to do to get in there, I, I don't know. So I guess the question would be, you know, would, would, does the Encore or the senior center, when they're agreement, after the first, are they going to make anybody that goes in there go through those same steps? And how do you set apart?
Well, and we haven't even talked about what kind of steps we would want to take as a council.
I know.
You know, at all. So, I mean, that's probably a good topic for organizational matters. We'll be organizing, you know, a return to in-person meetings and what the protocol is going to be for people to be in person at those meetings. You know, we haven't even gone there yet.
I don't disagree with that. And I guess my, my point is, is if, if that's it, that only solves one of the problems we have temporarily to me, doesn't solve the problem of the office space.
Right. And I don't think the Encore downtown location is a bad option. Honestly, it solves both. It could be two years. It could be something temporary. You know, it just depends on if council's going to want to, you know, have the cost of the rent and whatever build out would be to do that.
Correct. And I think you have looked with the new council at all those options.
Postpone until the first meeting when the new council seated.
Move to postpone by Zach. Is there a second for that?
That's the second meeting in November.
I'm not hearing a second for the oh, I, okay, I heard, all I, sorry, all I heard was you, Courtney, I didn't hear Paul. Okay, second by Cousins, thank you. Any discussion?
So when you said the second meeting is, does that mean that the present council is meeting on the ninth?
Yes. The charter is the second meeting, says the second meeting in November.
The what?
The charter says the second meeting in November is when they take.
Thank you.
That was consistent with being a village.
Okay, seeing no further discussion. Am I missing anybody in discussion? Seeing no further discussion. Ms. Jones, please call the vote to postpone this item to the, to November 23rd?
Yes, Smith?
No.
Bell?
No.
Cousins?
Yes.
Fisher?
No.
Knight?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
I didn't hear, I didn't hear Sean.
Oh, I didn't hear my name called. I didn't hear my name called there.
Yeah, Kyo.
I, I vote, I vote no. No, I'd like to act on this and get a place and set up. So no, I don't want to postpone it. So we're back to the original motion. And, and again, I stand by what I said. I think that the council can take up whether to do further temporary stuff later, but I think we should secure our spot and start talking about the protocols and things like that. So. The, the other thing is, you know, no matter where we have a meeting, there's going to be some level of cleaning that is going to be occurring here in the near future. So I don't see those costs going away, whether they're ours or the building owners. But anyway, so the, the original motion, Carol, was made by Smith, I believe.
Yes.
With a second by Knight?
Seconded by Knight, yeah.
Okay. Further discussion on that? Uh, Michelle's?
Yep. Do we know that facility has the infrastructure to support the online meeting option, either for members of council or members of the public?
Yeah, so we purchased cameras and microphones and things to make that option work, regardless of where we go.
And we know that the connection in that part of the building will support it?
We have a jet pack we can use with Verizon that has unlimited access for up to like 12 users. So we have, we can provide if necessary.
What's the, the term of the contract we're signing with Encore? Is it month by month? Is it a year? Is it two years? How long are we committing here? So we can have some
It's just per meeting, right?
We didn't get to a term because we haven't, you know, seen a copy of an agreement or anything. It was just on here. So if we want to do it, we can ask Dan about month to month or six months, or I, I don't know, whatever council wants.
We should probably have an idea of that before we jump into the pool. If you don't know how deep it is, that's when you break your neck.
Well, I think it could be reasonable to, to have the the motion be to approve a month to month and let staff go back and talk to talk to Dan about it.
Can you remind us how Jim phrased his original motion?
Jim, can you remind us how you phrased your original motion?
It was just to enter into an agreement. You know, it was unspecified as far as the length. Cause you know, we haven't had the discussion yet, so.
So we could modify that so that staff talks to Dan and brings back something, what brings back options. Is that acceptable to Jim and Julie?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, so that lets, you know, that lets, what we're, the motion now is, is basically to authorize staff to go back to Dan and say we're interested and bring back options as to whether it's month to month, or whether it would be for a specific term. And we'll see it again on the ninth.
Sounds good.
Sort of a step A and then a step B. Okay, any further comment on this item? K1?
Just clarify that we're not entering into agreement. We're just telling staff to get more information.
Correct. Essentially to bring, to bring back, you know, options for, for agreements. That makes sense, Zach?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the clarification. Okay, Ms. Jones, why don't you call the vote, please?
Okay. Fisher?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Michelle?
Sir.
Bell?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries 7-0, I believe. Thank you. At least we have some direction, and we'll see that on back next meeting, hopefully. Where are we here? We're back to, we're down to new business, I believe. Item L1, correct? New business. Go ahead, Paul.
I'll make the motion that we approve the resolution, page 178, 179, for the DTE and the city to property on, on Danway Road with the various items, numbers in there. So, yeah.
Okay. Motion by Cousins, second by Michelle's, was it?
Yep.
Okay. Discussion, or Courtney, you want to walk us through this a little bit?
We've been working on finishing the closing with DTE, which we're hoping occurs this Friday. And this is just an assignment of the purchase agreement so that the DDA can enter into the closing documents, which we felt made sense because they're paying us back for the property. They own the tougher parcel. So it'll just all be in the name of the DDA. And it just clarifies who can sign on behalf of the city for the Danway property sale. The usually title company likes to see that, so.
Okay, so again, we have a motion by Cousins, second by Michelle's, to pass the resolution on page 178, 179, or 170, yeah, 178, 179. Other questions by council? This has been a long time coming to this part.
Courtney can't leave until it's done, okay, so.
Right. I'll just add that is Scott chuckling over there. Scott's trying to drag it out as long as he can, I think.
Yeah.
To make it stay longer.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, next time, don't let him look at any legal descriptions. Just ask him if we could use a warranty deed on day one, will you?
Yep.
Yeah. No, I, I, I've been joking, joking around a little bit, but this, you know, we signed this agreement with DTE back in 2017 or 18, or wherever it was, and
And that was after years of
And that was after, yeah, years of going over the agreement. So it's been a long time coming to get to this, and it's, uh, it's quite transformational, so. Kudos to everybody involved. Okay, Ms. Jones, please call the vote.
Yes. Bell?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Cousins?
Oh, yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Uh, new business item L2 is a consideration of a resolution to establish social districts. Scott, I see your hand up.
And I'll make the motion that we adopt the resolution to establish a social district. The resolution is in, on page 185, 26 of our packet. Second, Michelle's.
Motion by Bell, second by Michelle's. Okay, thank you both. Uh, discussion. Or, or Michelle, if you want to start us off, that's, that's very fine as well.
So you've, you've seen this multiple times now, and you've had a lot of time to digest it. So instead of me going through it bit by bit, does anybody have any questions that I could answer or clarify any comments or concerns that you may have? I see Julie's hand.
Julie, go ahead. Yep, didn't do it. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, the question I have is how is this going to impact the Dairy Queen? I mean, are there going to be people walking back and forth with a drink in their hand in front of the Dairy Queen? There, there's tons of kids lined up to get a Dairy Queen, or? So the, excuse me, Dairy Queen will be closing, if I'm not mistaken, very shortly. So by the time, if we, if council were to adopt the resolution today establishing the district, there are still, as I've identified in, in my memo, a number of steps we're going to have to take before we can even apply to the Liquor Control Commission for our permit. By that time, Dairy Queen will be closed. You have the ability to determine when this social district operates and when it doesn't. Not just the hours of operation itself, but actually when you're going to have the, the common areas be active. And, and that can be seasonal. The primary driver of this is the fact that there's, there's not a lot of places for people during the winter time. We're navigating how outdoor seating will be used this year. This gives a little bit extra for the businesses. So Dairy Queen, the short answer is Dairy Queen won't be impacted at all. Because they'll be closed. Because they'll be closed. Thank you. Makes sense. Yep.
Uh, Jim Smith, I see your hands up.
Yes, I still have some concerns about this whole proposal. My preference, I know typically the outdoor scene that we have previously approved for some of the establishments typically goes away in the winter. I would prefer that we I would prefer that we, uh, just work on something to extend that and let each individual, uh, business, uh, utilize their, the sidewalk area that they've been using. And, you know, work, work with those areas rather than establishing, uh, new separate areas or trying to connect, uh, the various areas. I'd rather see them have their own individual area, uh, that they're responsible for.
So Mr. Smith, the outdoor, the outdoor seating can be year round. We, our zoning ordinance does not limit it. We have in the past, um, had the furniture moved during the winter months to accommodate snow removal. And there hasn't been the urgency or the need for, um, for outdoor seating in the winter. The COVID emergency has changed that. So what I have told the businesses and, and I believe I, I identified it here as in, as well as in previous, um, presentations to the council, they can continue their outdoor seating, um, those that have been approved for it. So Dexter's Pub, the Beer Grotto, Aubrey's, the Fillmore, um, Hotel Hickman, um, Erratic Ales. They can all continue theirs. Um, the Fillmore and, um, Hotel Hickman don't use public sidewalk, but all the others do. And they can continue to do that. The, the difficulty for those using a public sidewalk is it, it's still a small, limited space. Having the social district with that expanded common areas gives everyone just a little bit more room. Um, and possibly just a little bit more business.
I, I still have the preference for the existing areas.
I understand.
Thank you.
Michelle, help me, help me understand again how we're, um, how we're making sure we stay within whatever the stage minimums are, you know, a certain number of people and all that.
This doesn't fall under that. We have to identify, like in the commons areas, we could put circles for six foot distances. But as you know, if you're with a group of people that go to a restaurant, um, you could have six people around a table. Those six people don't necessarily have to be six foot distance, but table to table does have to be. Excuse me, so we would set up, um, circles, if you will, if we're going to have, um, any type of street furniture out there. It's still to be determined where, if there's going to be street furniture, um, who's providing it? Or do you allow people to bring their own, you know, a portable chair? But you would still, regardless of which way it was decided that it be done, you're still going to identify your circles for your six foot areas. So that people, you don't have, so that you don't have that whole area wall to wall, uh, people packed in like sardines.
Okay, that, that's the part of this that I'm trying to get my, my head around, if you will, and pardon me for the questions because everything we've done since March has been to limit attraction of groups, you know, and yet this in the resolution, you know, even says would be an immediate draw.
Right, but everything you've done.
Excuse me, I'm a little concerned about that without understanding how the setup is going to, going to limit that.
So everything you've done with the on-street parking, um, the relaxation of people using the sidewalks in the downtown has been to impact that immediate draw, to make it easier for people, um, to come in and enjoy the downtown as it benefits the businesses. This is that same, this operates under that same premise. We don't, we don't, like I said, we don't have the maintenance plan worked out yet or the, uh, management plan where those details would come into place. And so understand that if you, by, by adopting this resolution, nothing changes right this minute. We still have those steps to go through. If going through those steps, it became uncomfortable for council or didn't seem like it was going to be a benefit after all, you don't have to finish the process. You don't have to make the application to the Liquor Control Commission. This is just the first in a multiple step process.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I just wanted, I just think it's important to talk about that because I, I don't think our mind frame has changed, you know, and and the, the difference being that those, those areas in the street where we created areas for the businesses, people are actually being seated and they're led, they're led somewhere and they're, there, there's an accepted norm that's being overseen, if you will, and this is a little less regulated, if you will, from my perception of how they're going to interact, or at least that's my concern, I guess. So I just wanted to voice it, is all.
You make, your comments are right on point. And it is, I mean, we've made the jello and now we have to come up with the mold to contain the jello. So, um, it, it is a little bit of a leap of faith, but the, like I said, the check and balance in this, and I think I'm probably mixing my metaphors, but the check and balance in this is, um, you don't have to pull the trigger to submit the application to the Liquor Control Commission till all of the other steps are done. And if you're not comfortable through the process, you don't have to pull the trigger at the end.
Got it, got it. Okay, I just have one other comment and then I'll, I'll recognize, um, Councilmember Bell, uh, in the, maybe this is my grammar or not, in the second whereas, should common areas be commons areas?
No, we have one common area.
Okay, but isn't it called commons with an S?
The second whereas, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the second whereas says.
Commons area. Yes, it should be, it should have an S.
Okay, all right, just, just catch that on the final version. That's minor. Okay, thank you for that. Uh, Mr. Bell?
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to make the point that, well, two points. First is that, if we didn't get snow here, we wouldn't really be having this discussion. We just keep doing what we're doing and I think it would be a tremendous benefit to the businesses, but we do get snow and as Dan mentioned earlier, we have to take preventive measures to allow plowing to occur and so the, the current situation can't continue during cold weather, so we, this is really the only substantive thing that we can do to help those businesses to, to give them a little bit extra, uh, helping hand. Um, and I really think we should do it. Second point is that, as Michelle pointed out, this doesn't obligate us to follow through the process, but it is a necessary first step and there is a timeline here. Weather's getting colder and, um, the current, uh, allowance for using on-street parking terminates at the end of November. And so if we don't act on this tonight in a positive manner, we set the clock back at least two weeks and that could present a gap in, on the calendar during which those businesses don't have the benefit of, of outdoor seating and outdoor serving and they, they really are looking for that. I think a lot of them are just getting by as it is, so, um, that's why I favor this at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Zach, is that your hand?
Yep.
I'm getting better at spotting it, Bell.
Question for, um, about the districts, how tricky would it be to make the commons area larger? If it turns out wildly popular and we need to have more space so people are spread out adequately?
So, so what we would do, what we would need to do is to, um, the, the, the only place to really do it is an expansion of that current area. And we'd have to find a place for those, uh, relocated handicap parking spaces. Which I know we can find, but that would, that would be what we would do. We'd have to ask the, I'm presuming you're asking this as a, um, as an after the fact, um, you've gone through everything, you've applied to the Liquor Control Commission, you've got your permit and you're finding that it's wildly successful and we need to expand that. We'd have to, we'd have to, um, present a, a request to amend the dis, the commons area to the Liquor Control Commission.
All right, um, and so the next steps for staff, if this is adopted tonight, is to work on the management plan that which would be included in the application. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that's going to be involve also working with the DDA?
Yes.
And you think you'll have that for the next meeting?
For the, for the, the next meeting of the DDA is, um, is the third meeting in, uh, November, excuse me.
The nineteenth.
The nineteenth. And so I'd come back to council at your second meeting.
Okay.
Okay, unless there's a way to do a quicker, uh, special DDA meeting, um, to go over it. I have no objections to that if I can get the DDA to, to do that.
Perhaps the first draft comes to council at our first meeting and then it gets get to the DDA.
That's an option too, Zach.
All right, I'm good, thanks.
You're welcome. Did I miss a hand or a hand in the window anywhere? Okay, so, uh, Ms. Jones, remind me, we have a motion by Bell, second by.
Michelle's.
Michelle.
Okay, that's what I thought I had. Okay, good, thank you. Um, to approve the resolution on page one eighty-five and six, was it?
Yes.
Okay, please call the vote.
Knight?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Okay, thank you, everyone. Michelle, thank you for your work on that.
Thank you all.
Let's see, new business item L three is a consideration of, uh, interim city manager and next steps in the city manager search. I don't know if you want, somebody wants to make a motion or if you'd like me to go through what I've, what I did or how I did it or where I'm at with my thought process, uh, in trying to put this in front of everyone.
We have a few hands, Sean.
Hold on, I lost my, uh, got it. Mr. Smith?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, uh, combine the suggested motions on page one eighty-nine. A combined approval for the three motions there.
All of them as, as written there?
Yes.
Okay. Um, Mr. Bell, I see your hand is up.
I'll support Mr. Smith's motion.
Okay, thank you for that. Zach, your hand was waving, I think, at one point in time, right?
Yeah, it was, um, concerning the interim, I just wanted to ensure that we are hitting the quieter time of year. I wanted to make sure that we weren't going to be leaving things behind or forcing staff to work ridiculous amount of hours to cover those two or three positions, depending on how you do the math.
I, um, I'll, I'll let Justin and Courtney chime in here, but I believe that they have, uh, they are thinking about or have talked about some interim staff or a graduate assistant or something. Even if we don't take these actions here tonight to, uh, help bring somebody on to help, is that not correct?
Yeah, so we had in the budget, um, like a management intern, which we normally get somebody in like public administration school that needs um, credits, even if they don't, they just want experience and we've had some good luck, um, with that, so they would be able to help with some of the, you know, with some of the tasks, but we've laid out a lot of what needs to get done. So, yeah, I mean, I don't, I'm not a fan of extending it a really long time because I don't want the office to be without a whole person, but, um, I think the way that it's laid out is, is feasible unless Justin disagrees.
How long until it becomes painful?
I would say construction for sure. Like so April, May, well, a little bit before that, you know, absolutely not through, uh, by the end of winter. It really needs to be done, uh, in my personal opinion, because that's when it gets. I mean, we're lucky right now that we don't have projects going over the winter. You know, we're finishing some things up like the closing on DTE and, and trying to get these ordinances done, you know, some of that stuff, so. But I would say absolutely by, you know, construction season when we start doing crack ceiling and sidewalk projects and Third Street and, you know.
And I, I would agree with that and, and, um, one of the things that's taking up really the most amount of time for both Courtney and I right now is the election and, um, you know, that's, that's going to be over here in, in a, a week and a half or so.
Right, and, you know, the Parks and Rec master plan, Justin's been working on that, that's in good shape, you know, so we're, we're in pretty good shape with some of our longer term projects.
Right, um, my next comment is on the number three, um, with us conducting the search in-house. I really believe that the manager position is the most important position that council is involved in. And we, we've been fortunate to have good people in there, but I believe we ought to get professionals who do these types of recruitments and review process, um, to, to aid us in the process. So if it's all three of them, I can't support it. I'm going to wait for discussion and then change and, and make motion to amend that. I want, uh, Mr. Bryer to know that if I vote no, it's not because of him. It's just because that's my philosophy is I want to get the best people in the room to help us and I believe MML has that experience. I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Zach.
Paul here, I, I agree with, I agree with Zach and I wondered if, uh, in the process here that we're going to have an opportunity for exit interviews? And should that be in a motion?
I have no problem with doing an exit interview. How would you like to do that interview, Paul? Or what are you, how are you suggesting that interview be done?
Well, we've done, we've done it before with, I think with Allison. I can't remember Donna, it's been a long time ago.
Donna specifically said she would not participate in an exit.
That's right, I remember that. But Allison did, right?
I don't know.
I, no, I don't believe Allison did one either.
All right, well, I still think it's important we do that and maybe Courtney does not want to do it either, but that's, uh, we'll, we'll hear that from her when she says yes or no here, because I'll make the motion if we do, but if she doesn't want to do it, then I'm not going to waste my breath.
Yeah, I mean, I can do it. I just, I don't know the format, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure I'm, you know, looking for a hot light of seven people in a public meeting, but.
I don't, that was not my.
That's not that, then I'll consider it.
I, I was considering it a one-on-one basis for those that want to do it. If they don't want to do it, they don't do it.
Okay. That's up to you guys then, but I'm, I'm fine with whatever.
Well, hearing, hearing that Courtney had no problem with it, I would, would like to make then, uh, just in addition to that, when we finally decide what we're going to do with three here, just a opportunity for an exit interview by individual council members if they feel they'd like to. Not make anybody do it if they don't want to.
Well, Paul, I mean, I mean, if, if, if that's what you're suggesting, you know, I, I, I think that's sort of up to Courtney to decide whether she wants to have a, a conversation with any one of us if it's done individually. I mean, you could call her and talk to her anytime.
Okay. I think, I don't, I don't know that. In many cases, this is done in a more formal process, okay, that's why I'm just.
Yeah, I mean, I think it might be a little tough to do, you know, seven of them, but I mean, maybe if there were like three of you that wanted to do it or, you know, something under a, like two or. you know, something under a, like two or three people were interested in sitting down, you know, that's fine as an option, but.
We could take an informal vote right now, those that would like to do it, or don't want to do it, they don't want to participate, we'd find out some number here by doing it. I mean, Sean, you see her every day, so you can tell us what you're going to do or not do.
I don't see her every day. I, I talk to her most every day, but I don't see her every day.
Well, talk then, talk, talk, see.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I mean, I have a few outgoing questions for her. But I'm not, I don't know that I'm looking to schedule a formal meeting, you know, with council or a closed session meeting or anything like that.
That was not my intent.
I know, I hear you. I'm just, I'm just answering your question. I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to participate if somebody wanted to, you know, or in, in that meeting, I mean, Courtney's never been shy about answering my questions and you know, I'm sure if I asked her a question, she'd answer it honestly.
That's all I would ask.
Mr. Smith, I see every hand up?
Yes, I think a exit interview is a separate item. I don't see that as part of the steps moving forward on with this process.
Okay, Mr. Bell, I see you have your hand up?
Yeah, well, I'm glad Jim made that point, because I was about to make it. I think it's separate to this, if, if someone wants to make a motion along the lines of an excellent interview in some fashion afterwards, or separately, that's, it's fine, but I don't think I support adding it to this motion.
I can, I can live with that, Scott. Okay, thank you for your comment, I'll make it afterwards then.
Okay. Okay, for any further discussion on the motion by Smith, second by Bell's, on the three motions on page one eighty-nine? Zach, go ahead, please.
I move to amend the motion to remove item number three, the in-house process.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I'll say, I'll say it for discussion.
Okay, second by Cousins? Okay, discussion?
I guess I'll, I'll go.
Go ahead, Zach, you can start us off.
Is, as I said before, the city manager is the most important position, and because they pick the people who go on all the other spots. And the MML has folks who do this all the time, it's what they do. They recruit people, they know the questions to ask, they work with staff if we pick something that's not basic. It's like, if you're trying to build a house, don't try to design it your house yourself, don't have the builder design it, get an architect to do it, because they know all the tricks and and how to design things, so you don't have a wall that's thirty-three feet long instead of thirty-two feet. I think that's important. I think it's also good that we don't put extra stress on staff having to manage this and manage the interviewees and, and that end of it. So I think it's, it would be in our benefit, in the city's benefit, in the long term, if we instead do that with the MML.
Okay. Scott, your hands up, I see.
Thank you. Two points again. The first is that I don't think the motion as written precludes the future possibility of engaging the MML. I don't see it prohibited by this. So if down the road, council decides that sufficient progress isn't being made, or resources are being strained unnecessarily, they can, they can always act to engage the MML. Secondly, actually, three points, sorry. Second point is, there is a cost, as Sean points out here. It was fifteen to twenty thousand, something like that, to get their involvement. It seems like a, a lot of money for something that's never been needed before. And thirdly, I don't know that I don't know that a professional organization like MML is necessarily the best, has the best people for hiring someone for the city of Dexter. In my business, in my work, over the last thirty years, I've personally hired probably, I don't know, twenty, twenty, thirty engineers and scientists, and and I never had any formal training in that. It's just kind of common sense, knowing what the job required, and taking the time to figure out the right questions to ask and what to listen for in the interview, and so I don't, I don't necessarily agree with Zach's comment that, that you need an org, a professional organization to help you hire someone to fill this position. Thank you.
Well, I was a secondary, I'll speak, so I guess Scott, ask Scott a question first. Did you make the final decision, or did you make that recommendation to a group after you made your decision?
All my hiring recommendations had to be approved by our chief operating officer.
So it was one person that you had to convince then, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, in this case here, I guess my comment is, it's a little bit different here, in that we do have seven people instead of this one. It's, I don't know if they're apples to apples, but they may be, I don't know, I'm not going to make a judgment on that. I'll give you a, a situation that happened with the Huron River Water Chaconseil, when we just had Rebecca Essman, who by the way is a citizen of this city here. We did go outside, and we did a search. It was US search, mostly the Midwest area. We hired somebody from Chicago to help that process. It was not cheap. When it came down to it, though, that person that was, that came to the top was the person that actually was an in-house person, Rebecca. And for lots of reasons, besides just being familiar with the system. And so when we got done with it, I happened to be on the committee, when we got done with it, we recommended, and we had lots of comments that they thought that was a very excellent process, and that we did go outside, we had a wide, cast a wide net, and yet when it came down to it, we found that the, the person that was for the right job was right here, and they recommended it, and we, we submitted that to their, to the, to the board, and they approved it. So I, I think that the, that just doing it on your own has some, has some problems, and I'm, I'm not sure Donna will agree with me, but I've been through that process too many times in the late nineties and the early two thousands in this city to just kind of find a person that we've that's made an application, and you think it's the best person. We didn't have any help at all, and we ended up some disasters. I, I just think it's a, a good process, and we ought to put on our big boy pants, because we are now a city, we're not a community of seventeen hundred people, and it's time we do it the right way.
Well, I don't think we should let anybody coin one way, right or wrong, at this point. I think there's a lot of good people around the table here. I think there's a lot of good intentions in the room. My recommendation is to help get the process started and see the type of applicants that are out there. You know, as I've said on the other items, there's likely going to be at least a slight change in council by the second meeting in November, and you know, there, there's a month after that of allowing that council to have some interaction and some further discussion, but in the meantime, there's nothing wrong with having applications come in. With Justin as the interim, I felt it was important to go to Marie as the senior office person there. She can accept all applications. That can keep that process separate a little bit from, from Justin, if you will, in case, you know, he's by any chance interested in the permanent position. I, like Scott, have quite a bit of experience in hiring. I think with, you know, the assistance at the interview table of some of our senior staff and a couple other council members, you know, to be determined. I think that can, that can happen quite well. I think we can create a process where council can get a chance to meet these folks, but I personally would like to see all the applications that come in. That was not the process that's described by MML. They do a lot of sifting, and I suppose there's a reason they do it, but it's based on what we tell them, but you know, I, I looked at a sample of a packet or brochure that they put together for another community, East Grand Rapids, I think it was. And, you know, frankly, we could write the same thing about our community without paying that money to do it. It's very it, it was, I mean, it's eleven pages of a lot of stuff, but it's not stuff that we couldn't come up with if we wanted to go a similar route. Anyway, I, I have a lot of confidence in, in this council, and to find the right person, as well as with the assistance of our staff, and I guess I'm asking for your support to, to go at it without MML at this point in time, so. Donna, you had your hand up?
Yes, I, I support Scott's comment, but we can always turn to them if we need that. They're always there. If we just want to engage them, so I, I'm in favor of getting going and getting the office covered. There's a lot to be done. And I have a lot of faith in Justin.
Oh, Zach, I see your hand again, sir.
Yep, so I am aware that it does cost money. It's an investment, though. It's not, we're throwing it out, and we don't get anything for it. We get professionals. I do know some folks who work at MML just doing this, through previous jobs I had, who served as city managers, including one who served as a city manager at Mount Pleasant. So these aren't just yahoos who have public policy degrees. They know the job that we're looking to do. They know the pressures, they know how to interact with council. They know it better than any of us do. I do believe there is a risk to advertising it ourselves, and then coming back with MML. So I follow and work in the public realm. I followed job postings, and I guarantee you that whenever a city posts jobs multiple times, everyone's red lights come up, and they don't want to touch it because there's something going on there. If you see that job posted and then reposted within a couple weeks, within a couple of months, just don't touch it with the, as big a stick you can, because it's a mess. And I believe that's a potential risk we run into. Additionally, I have concerns not knowing what process we're going to follow. A lot of folks who may be interested in city management positions want discretion in the process. That means there's going to be, have to be some filtering from whatever is applied to what we get as a council, which is the same as the process there. However, that's done outside of our view, so it's, it's a little bit cleaner. And I think not having that buffer would make some folks who may be interested not want to apply for it, because of lack of anonymity and potential retribution from their employers, such as we saw happen to the fellow who was manager of City Man Arbor. They didn't like that he applied for jobs, and they threw him out. So I, I can't support doing it in-house now with that little paragraph that we've got there. It, it provides no process, and if we muck it up, it's going to get harder to come back around and fix it. I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Hands, Donna, did your hand go up? No?
No, no.
And that was just in the picture, sorry, I was scanning through the pictures.
Paul, one last time, I, I agree with, with Zach. You know, thi- this is a big decision, and we're not a small community anymore. We're not a village. We are a city with lots of lots of activities going on. And when it comes to the anonymity, that was one of the things that was very important for the hiring of Rebecca, that the other people that were very, very concerned about, they didn't want their name out there that they were applying for a job. And I don't know how you're going to control that. But MML can, and they did, and that's what they, that's what they do, and that's what happened in the, in the process with hiring Rebecca there at the Water Chaconseil. Those, there were four people, I believe, were the final ones, and three of them, as I remember, did not want their names being bannered about, because they didn't want to risk the present job that they had. And you know, we all think we can do it, we're all not skilled to do it. And we all think we can be good interviewers and sift through it. But I can tell you, being through this process before with multiple people, it doesn't happen that way. It doesn't happen that way, and we got to be careful about this. And we got to be professional about it, and we got to be bold about it, to be able to do it the right way.
Okay, other discussion on the, I believe Zach, the, was your amendment, right, to, to remove number three?
Correct.
So motion, it was a motion by Michelle, second by Cousins, to, to amend the original motion to remove suggested motion number three. Ms. Jones, can you call the vote on the proposed amendment to the motion?
Yes, President?
Yes.
Knight?
No.
Bell?
No.
Fisher?
No.
Michelle?
Yes.
Smith?
No.
Kio?
No. Okay, so that, that brings us back to the original motion by Smith, second by Bell's, to approve the three suggested motions as written in the packet?
So are folks comfortable with number three without any process attached to it? Basically says we're going to post something, and then Marie gets applications, and that's what we're running with, to hire the most important position in the city. Our folks.
Zach, I will bring back some suggested process. But, but it doesn't preclude the other three things from, from going forward. And, and the future council could discuss how they want to handle that.
I would propose we at least wait to post it until we know what that process is, that we can sure anonymity for applicants. At the very least, who's going to review them first? How are we going to interview, are we going to get it up? I, it's, it's very, very loosey-goosey. I, and, well, I'm just not comfortable with, I'm wondering if other folks are comfortable with how loose that is.
I'm not seeing any further comments, Zach. I, I, I will work with, I will work with existing staff and MML a little bit, maybe, and I'll, I'll do some reading, and I'll bring back a proposed process for the next meeting, a, a draft of it anyway, so that council can then comment on it. But I think that, I don't think there's any harm in applying. I mean, Marie's not going to disclose any, any names that come in, so I don't think there's any harm in that.
I was just unmuted, so I, I can address that. What we've done in the past is, all resumes are kept confidential, except amongst whatever the hiring committee is. Um, and then usually nothing is, I mean, this isn't in front of council, so it's going to have to be a little bit different, but usually nothing becomes remotely public until you're checking references. So you've already made your decision by then, or?
Yeah, you're down the road.
Yeah, you're pretty close to it. Then we have had applicants in the, in the past that have requested anonymity for, you know, assistant manager jobs.
Well, and I think even if there's like a final interview that's public with like the top several candidates, I mean, that's kind of expected, that, that's a possibility. You just have to tell them.
Yeah, understood.
Are we going to have a public meeting with the top couple of applicants, and who's going to run that?
Do we really need that decision made today, Zach? And you don't even have, you don't even have that decision if you go through the MML process. And you don't even have, you don't even have that decision if you go through the MML process. Okay, Ms. Jones, please call the vote.
Knight?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Michelle?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Cousins?
No.
Keo?
Yes. Thank you for the support on that. Uh, council comments, uh, starting with Mr. Michelle's, please?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Welcome tonight, thank you.
Mr. Cousins?
Uh, let me pass for a second. I had something written down. I gotta find it.
Um, no, no, there's no passing.
I just gotta find what I need to.
I teased you. I'll come back to you. Uh, Mr. Gilbert?
None, thank you.
Uh, is Bella on with us? I haven't. She's way down there with her Peter Pan.
I let her in the waiting room a few minutes ago, but.
Are you there?
Yeah, she's, she's still muted.
Gotcha. Okay, uh, Ms. Knight?
I just wanna wish everyone a happy and safe, safe Halloween. Be cautious, please.
Thank you. You too. Mr. Cousins?
I'll, I'll pass. I had some written down, but I can't find it, so it was passed. Not wasting anybody's time.
Okay, Mr. Bell, I think I still have you to call.
No, I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
And then Ms. Fisher?
I don't have anything tonight. Thank you.
Okay, we're down to non-arranged participation. Uh, Mr. McCarter, please.
Thanks, Sean.
You're welcome.
Three things, uh, kinda quick. First off, um, wanna offer a huge compliment to Justin for the way that he has handled the election process up to this point. I have called with a number of questions. I know that there've been a number of other people who have it's a complex process and he's had the answers just like that. And more, in addition to that, I think he is um, he is exhibiting at a tenor of calmness with respect to the process and success at a time when there's an awful lot of conversation, what can go wrong. He is demonstrating, I think, how public staff and officials can make things go right. Second things, Sean, I think you mentioned in one of the conversations, something about good intentions. And uh, I wanna bring that back to two things. One is the conversation that was just going on and I think something similar that was going on earlier with regards to the exit interview. As a, you know, a teacher in the district, one of the things that I really regretted was that there was no formal process for an exit interview out of the school system. And after a large number of years, uh, I, I, it was a craft. I mean, you bring skills to your job, you also develop a craft over your time in it. And to have that institutional knowledge vaporized to me is a, a serious mistake for any organization. So what I, I would recommend is just to offer to Courtney, if Courtney, if you would think about the things that you have learned, the tricks, the skills, the, the gold nuggets of the work that you have done in thirteen years that would be lost and are not necessarily gonna be caught because somebody's gonna feel free to call you later on. That exit interview doesn't have to be everybody. Uh, and I'm thinking much more of what you can provide to the city rather than the other way. Although with any kind of evaluation, I think a two-way process makes an awful lot of sense. The third thing uh, has to do with this conversation about uh, hiring Courtney's replacement. Um, it, to me, the conversation as I listened to it was a conversation about process skills. It wasn't a question about substantive decision-making like, are we gonna get, do the firehouse here or there? Or what are we gonna do about this specific resolution? Uh, this is more, do we have some, a process in place which is gonna allow us to fill? What I'm hearing is kind of a strategic need. It's a strategic level need for the city to have somebody in this position. So as I think about that with my experience, I, I'm thinking consistency with a strategic plan. What are the elements of the role? Um, how do you go about bringing the process skills adding to bear to help solve this problem of hall, of, of hiring her, her replacement? Now ideally, I think you would in your planning process recognize we need to have a process in place to be able to do this in the future. We're gonna have to do it now, but we need to do it in the future. And I heard you guys bringing, you folks brainstorming the elements of what some of that process would look like now that we're a city, given the reality where we are. So uh, I, I, I personally agree that at this point in the process, you don't know what your process is. Um, and, and the focus of what are the elements of that that are most necessary right now as we try to replace Courtney? That to me is the priority. Um, I'm gonna bring that back and just close out the comment, cause Sean, I'm not keeping track of time on this one at all. Uh, this is the, I, I believe the last meeting before the election, there've been several references to the turnover that's gonna take place. Um, when, when there is a new council. And I wanna highlight that process skill thing again. Um, there was that, that wonderful little starfish thing that Paul that you offered because you're a biology teacher. I'm gonna offer something for my teaching time, which is, I, I used to say, my Wayback machine is busted and my crystal ball is also busted. So, you know, I, I, yeah, I have to deal with the situation in the minute. I don't wanna live in the past. I wanna learn from the past. And I'm thinking about the fire hall and the election and what's gonna happen next. I have noticed that we have had several of the candidates on the call, some are still on the call. Um, and obviously, there are a number of you who are still gonna be here after the election is over. To me, the fire hall is a substance decision, hugely important one. I've been in, I've been in this town almost three decades now, so you know, I got a lot of the history of that one going back too. But it's an important substantive issue. And I see you folks stuck in process on that one because you have different views of what the substantive solution should be. And at the moment, it seems like that's really dominant. It's an issue in the election. It's an issue for thinking about what's gonna happen in the next year or two. It's hugely important. It's strategically important for the city. Um, what I'm seeing missing is in a bigger, in a bigger sense, the process skills of coming to some revolution with the people who are on this council with the substantive positions that they've got. And the reality, the best thing for the city is gonna involve compromise and how do you get there? And how do you get there in this case quickly? Because yeah, it has been around a long time. So for the candidates who are on, for the people who are still gonna be on afterwards, I personally believe that there's a space in the middle of this council, a space in the middle of the seven people where you bring your skills and you bring your substantive positions. And if necessary, you get a facilitator who doesn't have a dog in the fight. Who can help you to bring this thing to a reasonable resolution. Uh, I've seen that happen. I mean, I worked in the US government at a very high level. And it wa- it can't happen. But you need, you may need a process expert who doesn't have a dog in the fight. Or people on the council who are good at facilitation and negotiation and are assemblers of things into a picture rather than fixing in a position. Brainstorm thoughts, that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. McCarter, again. Uh, Michelle, you have your hand up, I believe?
Um, one thing that I had forgotten to mention with my report, um, the mayor of Northville uh, visited our downtown a couple of weekends ago on a Saturday. He was very interested to see our Mill Creek Park. He's heard from not only me because I'm on certain committees with the city, but he's also heard from our consultants um, about Dexter's Mill Creek Park and the, the, the pathways uh, that come in and out of the city and connect to other jurisdictional uh, trails. The city of Northville is looking at ways to open up um, a portion of the Rouge River that runs currently through the Downs, the Northville Downs property. And they want to um, make a linear park and connect to uh, Heinz Drives Park and other, the, a potential uh, pathways that go through um, that portion of Wayne County and, and Oakland County. And they're looking to, to Dexter to see how we did that. Um, um, obviously, I was not here when you all did this. Um, and I can come up with a lot of information, but they're going to have a group um, that's gonna be part of a task force that would like to come out as a group and meet with some of, um, some of the staff and council who would be interested in talking with them about what your process was, how you did this. So just keep that in mind. Um, it's probably not gonna happen before the end of the year, maybe in the um, the, the wintertime, but be a little cold, but um, um, they're looking for whatever guidance and um, information you can provide. Thank you.
Thank, thank you for sharing that, Michelle. Be happy to participate if you need me.
Thank you.
Um, not seeing any other hands at the moment. So with that, I will seek a motion for adjournment. Jim Smith, okay, Jim? Okay, second by Knight? Uh, all those in favor of a journey?
Aye.
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 Have a good week. Uh, good luck to everybody in the election that's out there and uh, we'll see you in November.
Good night, all.